Again, welcome to the December twentieth twenty twenty one Select Board Meeting. In accordance with an act relative to extending certain covid nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. And signed into law by Governor Baker. Tonight's Select Board Meeting will be conducted remotely via Zoom and will not be open to the public for physical attendance. The meeting is being recorded, live streamed and cable broadcast by the Eastern Community Access Television. Which is Comcast ninety-eight and Verizon twenty-three. And on ECAT's website at WWW dot EASTONCAT dot org. This meeting is closed captioned for the hearing impaired. If you're watching on your computer. You'll see a CC button on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen. If you're watching at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email the board at SELECTBOARD@EASTON.MA.us. And if you're watching from an electronic device, please pose your question on the Q and A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. And at this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board Member to state their name for the quorum.
Craig Barger.
Mark Lamb.
Amy Stevens.
Jennifer Stacy.
And Dottie Fulgenetti. And we also have Town Administrator Connor Reed here. So, thank you, everybody. Welcome to our last meeting of twenty twenty-one. Can you believe that? The first, uh, the second item that we have on the agenda is the GFOA Government Finance Officers of America. Distinguished Budget Award um for fiscal year twenty twenty-two's budget. So Connor, this is great news. You want to tell us a little bit about it?
Uh, sure. And I see Wendy in the audience. I don't know if she uh wants to jump on camera and talk about it because she does a lot more work. Uh, on this than I do, but I'm happy to. Uh, announce that Easton uh for the second time has received the uh GFOA Distinguished Budget Award. And uh what this is is basically uh the kind of uh crowning achievement for a governmental budget communications award. It's a national award uh from the Government Finance Officers of America. Uh, that recognizes budgets that are uh really effective as policy documents, financial plans. Uh, operations guides and communications. Uh, devices uh for the sake of transparency and accountability. Uh, and this is a, a program that um uh Dottie, I, I believe you might have heard of at a conference many moons ago. And encouraged us to push ourselves on our uh budgeting documents here. Um, even in, in my tenure, in the past ten years working for the town, the operating budget used to be a, a kind of three to five page executive summary. With um basically a spreadsheet attached to it and then some uh detailed outputs from our accounting database. And now it's a multi-hundred page. I believe ten to twelve chapter uh policy tome that includes everything from budget calendars to a guide for citizens to understand the municipal budget process. Which boards, committees and departments have which responsibilities, who they answer to. Uh, and then every single department has its own little narrative story with policy objectives for the coming year. What they plan to do with the funding that's being requested of voters. Uh, it, it's a really great document. Um, and we're, we're all very proud of it here. Um, we took a year off from applying last year due to the uh global uh pandemic. Uh, and resubmitted for fiscal twenty-two and uh have won. And um I'll, I guess I'll turn it over to Wendy to add anything I've missed, but I, I do want to specifically thank Wendy. Our Finance Director and uh Michael Blanchard, the Assistant Town Administrator. Um, they do a ton of the uh work uh as far as hours invested on the front end. To make sure that the formatting and the uh very, very, very specific uh data that the GFOA wants to see. In all these books is included uh across really uh, uh, all of our departments, including schools who've been great on this as well. Uh, to provide just a tremendous amount of additional information above and beyond what's required by our town charter. Whether it's a planning department. Uh, or recreation or DPW or schools, everyone's been great. Uh, so thank you to Wendy and Mike and, and Wendy, did I miss anything?
Um, not really, not really, but uh, but I would like to just add, you know, we are very proud of that document. Um, every year it just gets better and better. Um, it, it is quite a lengthy document, but it's very comprehensive. Um, it has a lot of um great informative appendices. It's got the school department budget in detail. It's got the capital budget in detail. Um, and the other thing too, that's, that's great about it that we changed from the other, the other years is uh we've, we've. Um, condensed it down to, you know, just regular eight and a half. Um, by eleven papers. So, you know, if anybody wants to download it and they want to print sections of it, it's a lot easier. Uh, to do that and a lot easier to, to read when you, when you print it. Um, but. Um, and it is pretty um, an extensive process when you go and apply. Uh, for the award, there's about, I think it's about seven different pages of criteria. And a lot of it um is mandatory that you have to include. And not only do you have to just check off and say that you met the criteria, you have to reference the page in the document where you did actually meet that. Um, so it, you know, it does take a while, but it's uh very, you know, well worth it and um, we, you know, we're really proud of, of the result.
Excellent.
Well, I would say, you know, when I uh go to the Mass Municipal Association uh annual meetings and the trade shows. And they were talking about this one year and I thought it was really great. So I came back and. This actually started back when David Colton was the Town Administrator. And, you know, when we go to those events, we, a lot of us come back with all these ideas and. It's great to have good ideas, but it's really hard to implement them. And this was something that um I appreciated the extra effort. Because it's, it's a huge undertaking and it really took several years before we were able to get all the pieces in. But I think it, it, you know, Easton's long stood on um uh as a leader of transparency. And really, this is so, uh, if this isn't transparency, it really talks about every angle of the budget that you could possibly be interested in. Like you said, and it's really like more of a reference material. Nobody's going to sit down and read that cover to go, cover, most likely. But you might say, you know, what did the DPW do last year with their budget? And, you know, it gives a, a nice little storytelling of what did we do last year? How did we use taxpayer money to benefit the town in this particular department? And what are we going to do next year? How are we going to leverage that to move forward? And the storytelling aspect of it is what I think is really good because budgeting, you know, can be a little bit um tedious. If you're just looking at numbers, but this really tells, you know, tells the story. Um, I really like the organizational chart. I think a lot of people in the town, you know, they don't really understand. Who, who reports to who, who's elected, who, how does, how do the boards and committees fit into that? So I think starting off with that and how to use the budget is really, really great. And I know that it's been a tremendous amount of work, especially keeping up with it. And um, I'm really just personally delighted that, that you have taken this on as something um to continue. Because it would be really easy to do it for one year and not be able to keep up with it. So it is a tremendous amount of work and you and Michael and department heads and Connor have done a really great job with it.
Thank you.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
I just love it when Easton is leading and, and Wendy, thank you very much Connor, Michael. You guys do a terrific job.
Yeah, oh, sorry. I just wanted to thank all the departments too, because, you know, it's, it's, it's a group effort. Um, you know, the school department, they have to get all their information to us. Each department head, they have to write their narrative and submit all of that. Um, so it really is a group process and. Glad everybody's very cooperative.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, these are very well deserved accolades. You guys are in the forefront. Um, you keep setting yourselves up to top yourselves year over year. So I don't know what you're going to do next year, but uh I'm looking forward to it.
All right, couldn't find the mute. Um, I, I think next year it's a, it's their trip to the White House, right? It's the Super Bowl, the victory, and they're going to have to go on the lawn and um. Uh, just explain to the rest of municipalities throughout the country uh how to do it. So, thank you to all the department heads, uh Wendy, Connor, Michael. Thank you, guys.
There's really not much I can add other than to say that I have been on the side you're on with the data collection process. And synthesizing the information and pulling it all together. Um, it is a tremendous amount of work and a lot of cross-checking and working with people to verify information. And um, you know, going back and second guessing the way you tell the story, reference to the storytelling is an important thing. An important skill to bring to the story. Um, so thank you, because coming up into um kind of the music, music, municipal wor- worlds. And getting your feet wet, this was such a great resource for understanding the picture of our community and having a lens for understanding things. So thank you for continuing to push the envelope higher and higher. And um, this is totally like case study material for like a Harvard class of municipal financial management.
Thank you.
Just to add to um, to that is that these are judged by independent um leaders in the financial industry across the country. So it's not just something that everybody gets an award. You know, you have to, it, it is judged. It is um a process. And um, once you meet that criteria, you really are the gold standard of budgeting. So um, I just want to make sure that people know that it is something that requires work even to, to qualify to get this standard. So um, thank you so much. And also a reminder, um Connor, do we, I think we still have the um. The, on the website, the um ClearGov. Do we still have that or?
We do, but um during uh, I, Wendy, correct me if I'm wrong, but during budget cuts in covid. That was one of the things, we, we were a beta. We were one of the first communities in Massachusetts. This actually predates our GFOA budget book. Um, you know, we were one of the first Massachusetts municipalities to get on board with basically the premium version of ClearGov. That had significantly more detail that basically matches the level of detail you see in this budget book. Uh, but when we were uh having to, to really cut back during uh covid, that, that was one of the expenses that we eliminated. So we are, we're, they poll uh the publicly available information kind of concurrent with this. Even the State's Department of Revenue is actually really up to their game on uh data visualizations and comparative analysis available publicly. Um, so the public sector has kind of caught up to the private sector. So I think ClearGov still aggregates that publicly available information, but no, we're not um at that kind of premium tier uh webpage at this point.
Well, I think that when we had ClearGov, we were, what, we were the beta, so we were one of the first that used that. And people used it in the very beginning and then it, just like anything else, it tapers off. And we weren't really getting the bang for the buck when we looked at it. And at the same time, the Division of Local Services, DLS, at the state, they started to really mirror a lot of the reports that were in that. And pull together that technology. So this is really the next step from that, that it's, it's um, I think easier for the user. Um, so I, I think, I guess my point in this is this goes back even before. The work on getting to where we are now goes back even before um where the budget book started with looking at that level of transparency. So, thank you so much Wendy and uh Michael and really appreciate everything that you did um to get that award.
Thank you.
So we will have a, a press release going out on that and um encourage everybody to, to look on our website to check it out for themselves. And any questions, let us know. So the next item we have is the Town of Easton covid nineteen vaccine booster clinics. Um Connor, do you want to share that with us?
Uh, sure. So um, I'm going to get into much more detail at the end of the meeting with everything we've been doing on covid mitigation. Uh, even since our last meeting two weeks ago, but specifically we have a uh booster clinic, Moderna Booster Clinic. Being run tomorrow by Health, Cert and the Fire Department. Uh, from two to six PM at Robingham Hall. We still have a few spots left. We've been heavily advertising this. It's a two hundred dose clinic. We ran a two hundred dose clinic last week, a hundred doses before that. Um, so we've really uh been kind of uh hitting the pavement, um trying to get as many shots in arms as we can. So again, uh, there is a, a clinic available. It's free for all residents or people who work in Easton. Uh, there's still some spots left and you can sign up by visiting EASTON.MA.us slash covid nineteen. Um, additionally, the day after, on Wednesday, we have a, our third uh rapid antigen test clinic that we've run this month. We've been doing uh at least one test and one vaccine clinic every week for a few weeks now. But I believe that that is actually already completely filled up. Um, Michael, you're here. If I'm wrong, uh, or you can let me know. But I, I think uh the demand for that really is, has grown over the month. So um, that might already have been filled up since the agenda was posted.
Sorry, my video wouldn't go on. Yes, that, that filled up. Um, we had a hundred four spots. We actually added some additional today. And we all filled up almost instantaneously. So clearly a great demand.
Um, so again, uh, Easton, uh, if you are looking for a booster, uh, go to EASTON.MA.us slash covid nineteen. Um, this will be our, our third or actually fourth uh clinic we've run this month. And we're going to continue to uh make clinics and test uh opportunities available through the winter, uh, as long as we have the supplies. Um, and I, I'll, Dottie, I, I'm going to get into more detail on that in the other uh section. But I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has about tomorrow's clinics and Wednesday's clinic.
Anyone have any questions? All right, we will wait for the uh, for the rest of your presentation on that. Thank you. Um, the next item is the Eastern Shovel Town Cultural District Management Partnership Team Appointment for an alternate. And we have um one candidate, Mark Vinicor, and this will be for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So while Mark um gets uh his audio and video going. I just wanted to, I'm not going to read through the whole um, the whole charge of the, the district. But what I do want to say is that there's only a handful of cultural districts in Massachusetts and Easton is one of them. It's a really, really challenging process to get that designation. And Carolyn Cole has headed that up for us and done an amazing job. So the management partners, their, their goals are to attract artists and cultural enterprises. Encourage business and job development, establish the district as a tourist destination. Preserve and reuse historic buildings, enhance property values, foster local cultural development. And there's a, a group of the makeup. They want to have artists and people that are really involved in the arts and culture that are serving on this management committee. And one of the other goals of the district is to be able to offer these cultural events at little to no charge. Um, so that everybody can really take part and appreciate them. So we have Mark here and um we have your uh application. But Mark, why don't you introduce yourself? Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on this committee.
Hey, Dottie. Hey, everybody. Um, so my name is Mark Vinicor. Um, longtime Easton resident here. Uh, very involved in the Eastern Lions Club in the community of Easton. Um, love the community of Easton in general. Um, recently I've been working on a bunch of things uh with the Lions. Um, one of them being called um, call it Eastern Live, and it kind of started during the pandemic. We spoke about this before, about a couple of events, events that we did at the hu- at the hall, Yolk Seams Hall. Um, I love these collaborative efforts. I love, you know, bringing things to the community of Easton. And uh, you know, when I met Carolyn Cole, um, very impressed with her whole organization and, you know, um, her ties to the community. So I'm looking to just kind of uh enhance that and bring what I can to the table. To help her and the town do more of these kind of uh collaborative community events. You know, to really get this town humming. So that's kind of what I'm trying to do here.
Terrific. So the board will uh each um ask you questions if they have them and um then we will take a vote. So Craig?
I just want to say that Mark does a terrific job working with the Lions. Um, as a, as a, as a lion, I, I really appreciate the work that he does. Um, and I'm very excited that he's decided that he wants to volunteer with another group. Um, so thank you for that, Mark.
Great, great. Thank you. Forward to it.
Mark, how are you?
Hey, Mark, how's it going?
Not too bad. Uh, I think you're perfect for this, for this post. Um, you know, I, I've seen you in action. You're tenacious. You're dedicated. Uh, you s- you strike me as the type of person where once you put your mind to, to something, uh, coming up short is not an option. So uh, this is outstanding.
Great, great. Thanks.
Jamie?
Mark, uh, you don't know me, but I know your name. And uh, yeah, your reputation uh is uh, is definitely noteworthy. So uh, thank you for, for, you know, stepping up in this capacity and for everything you do with the uh Lions Club. And uh, I know my colleagues uh will speak to your character as well. So thank you.
Great, great. Thank you.
And Jen?
I really have no questions. Your background looks so synergistic with your other community service and what you want to do here. So it feels like a match made in heaven. So, you know, thank you for putting your hat in the ring and, and thank you.
One thing I just want to say quick, which Dottie was saying, which I really like. Um, you know, it's kind of important here. It's like um, the events that there were, we're running through the Lions Club, we're opening up to the whole community and trying to bring the community together. And, you know, in this sense, we're asking for donations to the Lions Club, but we're not limiting to um, you know, um. And it's not uh exclusive to, to cost. Um, if sh- should somebody not be able, you know, we're trying to be very inclusive to the whole community in general. So some, a lot of the uh events that I've seen with Carolyn, you know, at the hall or outside or um with bands and arts, whatever. Um, look to kind of help in that way, so.
And I would just um also add that during the pandemic, you know, a lot of our local organizations and nonprofits were really struggling to try to. Stay afloat for one thing, but also to keep their membership interested and, you know, to stay connected with them. And that's one of the secrets to success of the Lions Club is that they meet every other week and they stay connected. And when they couldn't do that, Mark really stepped up and thought it would be a great idea to do these virtual um mu- music opportunities. And if you, you know, when we think back to this, the gig economy, you know, our musicians and artists, they were out of work and struggling. And so Mark came up with this great idea to have virtual um opportunities to be able to present this music. And it was really very, very ahead of, you know, the curve to do that. And really getting the interest from the public and the performers to be able to do that. And uh, the live performances now are amazing, a lot of fun. There was great um, great uh attendance at them during the summer. And now as we go into the winter and um really appreciate you doing that. I think that bringing your creativity and enthusiasm to the partners is going to be a lot of fun. Um, I serve on that board as well and I feel like you're going to keep us on our toes too.
Excellent, excellent.
So um Craig, if you'd like to make a motion and this will be a roll call vote.
Oh, moved. Mark Vinicor for the Culture District.
Second, Lamb.
That's Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger Vinicor.
Lamb Vinicor.
Stevens Vinicor.
Stacy Vinicor.
And Fulgenetti Vinicor. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
The clerk will be in touch with you about swearing in and um the information that you need to get started.
Uh, great. Thank you so much and look forward to uh many uh concerts coming down the road.
Terrific.
Through uh many different organizations. So it'll be good.
Well, thank you. Have a good night. Good to see you.
Okay, take care. Yep, bye-bye.
So I'm looking through here and um, hold on one second. I want to skip to item nine, uh, if the board would agree to. We have a resignation um from the Audit Committee from Len Berkowitz. And I see that Len is, whoop, are you?
Yeah, uh, sorry. Uh, well, so we put it right after eight because Len is presenting the audit with Wendy uh to you to court tonight. So it's he, uh, he's here for his last official act before you accept the resignation.
Okay, I didn't want to make him wait through the other items, but if he's doing the presenting, that makes a difference. I should have known that. Thank you. All right, so item five is a discussion and vote for the Blanche Elementary School Great Builders Project Change Order number four.
Sure. So uh, we have Walter Hartley here from PMA who's going to get moved in because the next three items, five, six and seven, all are related to the Blanch Ames Elementary School Project. Item five, uh, just a quick refresher, the board voted to establish a change order review protocol, including the technical review committee. For the school planning committee uh that I'm a member of. Uh, where once a week, uh, various staff uh meet with the project management team to review outstanding change orders. And at various increments, we bring bundles of approved change orders forward to the board. Uh, the TRC can only approve uh change orders that aren't necessary to the advancement of the project and are non-discretionary. Uh, and only after they've been re- reviewed by our design team and our OPM uh and get negotiated frequently. Down to a point where our project management team feels that it is a reasonable price. So this is your fourth bundle. Uh, it's about a hundred and seven thousand. Um, Walter is here to answer any questions you have.
Walter?
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I didn't realize I had my video off.
Welcome. So we got a change order number four.
Yes. Uh, and any questions, happy to run through it and happy to take you through a, a status update of where we are on contingency as well.
Okay, and you've included the change authorization log with that as well.
I have, yep.
Um, Craig, any questions?
I just think it'd be helpful if you just run through, you know, what exactly this entails, Walter.
Not a problem. Uh, so first two PCOs that are included in change order four. Are regarding structural steel elements that were not shown on the drawings, not identified, so they're not included in the base bid. Uh, one of those that's at the uh monumental uh ramp at the cafeteria one. So if you remember back uh during design, it's a uni- universal design element. Uh, instead of a grand staircase, it's a monumental ramp uh that runs through that area. So universal access for all uh students and staff and anyone in the building. Uh, so some changes there. Um, or some additional steel that was not shown that is necessary. Uh, the second one, uh, added angle post at the curtain wall, again, a structural steel element. Um, detailed in one area, not called out as typical, but needed in a couple other areas. So uh, not paid for in the bid, um, something that the design team uh and, and PMA feel is a reasonable price. And, and negotiated down to that value. Uh, the largest uh piece, second, first largest piece of this uh changes for rainwater leader locations. Um, this is kind of a uh combined plumbing as well as carpentry um adjustments. Uh, so rainwater leader, this is, uh, if you remember back to the change order three or change order two, I believe there was one for E-Building included. And this is actu- actually, uh, the plumbing engineer and, and uh architect went ahead and, and checked the entire building. And noticed that there was quite a few discrepancies on the sizes of the rainwater leaders. Uh, from the roof down to the gra- uh ground, um, they need to be consistent sizes. They were not, um, they were not uh on the drawing. Some of them were ten inch from the roof going down to eight inch, uh, going back to six inch. So it didn't really make sense. We needed to coordinate those. Um, so this is for some material upsizing. This is for some additional box outs uh around some of these chases where the rainwater leads are going. Uh, these are for some um movements of those, some extensions uh to get down to the correct locations. If, you know, if you upsize a pipe or change a pipe size, sometimes it doesn't fit in that wall. We did need to find some new locations for them. So it's a combination of uh plumbing, additional scope, um, more material, larger material. And then some additional scope for the carpentry team um for additional chases. Uh, and, and some changes in drywall. Uh, that was to the um amount of about forty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, we did have a couple of questions come up, uh, wet wall conflicts at Building B, second floor bathrooms. Uh, that required some changes in drywall. That was a small piece of this. Uh, next item was PCO thirty-nine. That's uh some roof blocking not shown at exhaust fans. We did show, I believe, four layers of blocking, but in some locations, there was up to eight layers of blocking required. Um, initially, uh, the uh company came back and, and thought there was no blocking shown. The architect quickly pointed out that there was blocking shown and not only that, but they were doing some funky math and they didn't realize they were doing. So that, that started out at about twenty-four thousand and came down to about forty-seven hundred dollars. So as Connor mentioned, these do get eyes on them and, and quite a bit, uh, quite a bit of teams of eyes on them. Um, RFI one forty-six is a Makerspace window ABB, a detail not called out. Um, these are for some jet outs at um these Makerspaces, so the windows kind of protrude from the exterior of the building. Um, ABB not uh code required, but the design team, PMA. And even the general contractor as well as the ABB installer um felt that uh for the long-term durability, long-term maintenance. For the East and that the money is well spent here um for seventy-seven hundred dollars to get the full ABB at these locations. Although the water uh really couldn't get into the building from there, it could get into the internal system of that window. So not detailed, um, but felt was a good cost um to, to use some money and, and as shown, uh, as um. Recommended by the designer. Uh, next two items were for dri- uh drinking fountain drain lines at Building D and C that were not shown on the drawings. Uh, same cost for each. We needed to tie those in. Um, those are for the bottle fill uh and drinking line uh stations. Uh, next item was for a undermount sink. Um, this is kind of a common one uh that we, we see. It's a change, this is a change in material only um for, for a, what we call a P-five to a P-five A fixture. Um, but they reduce the, they basically make these ADA uh compliant. Uh, there's a certain height at the uh window, the mirrors can be mounted behind the backsplash to be ADA compliant. And when there's a um, a lip on the back of the, the sink that was specified, they actually can't meet that uh requirement. So this is a material change um to, to meet that requirement. Uh, the next item, which is the second largest portion of this, was for uh the removal of the stockpile for CCD one. Um, the team had spent the better part of the summer, uh, once we discovered uh the underground storage tank. And removed the soil from it. Um, we had already taken out all of the um structures. But we did have um about, let me see. Mobile stop out, sorry, uh, eleven hundred cubic yards of uh material uh that did need. Mobile stop out, sorry, uh, eleven hundred cubic yards of uh, material uh, that did need to go. We were trying to find a place in Eastern that was gonna be able to use it, but um, unfortunately, this material was kind of complete junk. So anyone that might have wanted it would have needed to amend it. It really didn't make any sense for someone to be reusing it. It had some crappy stones in it that would need to have been plucked out or crushed and then mixed back in, needed to be mixed back in with sand. Um, so we, we did feel that the price provided to remove that soil um, was acceptable at twenty-eight thousand dollars. So uh, we, we had them go ahead and do that. Um, and then the last one is a unit price zero dollar cost, but PMA tracks these uh, internally. So that um, these are included within the bid. So if they're not fully expended, they would be returned as a credit um, PCO at the end of the job. Um, but PMA tracks these uh, internally so that they don't, that we can just approve them with the requisition. So that's a, a quick run through and detailed run through of all the PCOS included within change order four.
Thank you, Walter.
No problem. Any other question?
I do, I have a quick clarification, Walter. Um, so I forget which, which item it was, uh, which, which PCO, maybe thirty-nine. Um, it sounds, and it's just clarification. If a subcontractor misses something on a drawing and the drawing is correct, don't, do they absorb the cost or do they say, hey, I, I missed that on the drawing? Uh, I need, I need a change order because, because they missed it.
Yes, so yep, that you're, you're correct. Um, that, well, sorry, you're saying i- if, if it's on the drawings, um, that is not a cost to the owner.
Okay, alright. I just wanted to make sure of that. Um, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, so this was shown, but uh, the one you're referencing, that it was shown, but not to the extent that was needed on the drawings. Yep, four inches, four layers of-
Gray area and they argue the gray area and say, hey, we, we quoted you this because it was gray. And, and now you're telling us it's that. I, I've been there, I, I get it. So um,
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, not a problem.
No, no questions. Thank you, Walter.
You got it.
No questions for me. They're very thorough as always. Thank you.
No problem. Alright. Um, do we have to, where are we on that? So we do have to take a vote and change order four.
Uh, please.
So Craig, would you like to make a motion to um, approve change order four?
Oh moved, Bodger.
Second Lamb.
Bodger Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full Genetti, yes. So the next item is discussion and vote, the Blanch Ames School, um, PMA Massachusetts School Building Authority Project Funding Agreement Amendment.
I am happy to discuss this, so I wanna let everyone know.
Take it away. This is uh, it starts getting into a really deep MSBA weeds, so.
Yeah, yeah, this is a really fun spreadsheet. Um, and I uh, was going back and forth with uh, Elizabeth and um, I, so I apologize to board, there actually is no documentation to this other than the spreadsheet that was sent over. Um, this is an amendment to a document that uh, this group approved in Ja- late January twenty-twenty. Um, so it's the, which is the project funding agreement, which is the um, agreement you enter into with the MSBA that sets your ma- uh, uh, maximum grant for the project. Um, and what happens is, once you receive your bids, uh, the OPM and with, with the, the leadership group negotiates with the MSBA to get the PFA bid amendment. We, so we have to send them uh, quite a few documents. You guys have actually done uh, a few pieces of it to vote where the project, where the district share of the bid savings would go. So that stays within the project uh, as owner's contingency. Um, so you've done a lot of the, the backlog of this work already. This is really just a finalization. So we are happy to let you guys know that the estimated maximum, estimated maximum total facilities grant is almost identical even with the ten million um, in bid savings. Um, it's thirty-four point four million uh, at the PFA versus thirty-four point two million. Um, so it's about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand lower uh, than it was. Um, the only two significant changes to that were that when the PFA is negotiated, um, you're carrying wanna say about two and a half percent of uh, your cost uh, for the construction up in the budget, in the um, in the line items. Whereas once you get your bids, you're only carrying your contingency uh, below the line. So you're getting reimbursement on a piece that once it's dropped below the line, you don't get reimbursement and that's pretty well known. Um, so that, that's the reason for the hundred and eighty-eight thousand change. Nearly everything else was identical in that spreadsheet. So we're really happy to see it. Um, a quick review for PMA was really happy. Uh, we are waiting for the final documentation for them to come back. And once they send it back, we're, we'll do a quick cursor review to make sure nothing changed from the proposal. And um, we'd recommend uh, that the select board uh, move ahead and sign the PFA bid amendment. So really happy with that and really happy with the MSBA and look, looking to get that executed as well.
Craig, any comments, questions?
No, I have none. Thank you.
Mark?
No questions.
Jamie?
No questions. Thank you.
Jen?
No questions. Thank you.
Great. Well, I, I think it's amazing that uh, those numbers are so close and you know, this is just another testament to uh, as somebody who sits on the committee and sees that, you know, this stuff is really calculated and estimated down to the penny. And there's, it's, it's, this is this, one of the smaller spreadsheets. So to do that is, and keep it in, in that uh, in that small window is pretty amazing. So thank you for that. So um, the select board would need to vote to approve the documentation once received from the MSBA as it was in line with PMA's previous forecast for reimbursement. So Craig, if you'd like to make a motion to approve the documentation?
So this is the approval of PFA bid amendments as presented.
Uh, as reviewed by PMA. So we'll, we'll just confirm that nothing changes when the final documentation comes in.
As reviewed by PMA.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion, yep.
Alright, second Lamb.
So it's Bodger Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Genetti, yes. Okay, so on to item seven, discussion and vote uh, to grant an easement for national grid installation of underground electrical utilities for the Blanch Ames Elementary School on Spooner Street.
Uh, Walter, feel free.
You got it. Um, so a, a quick description, this is really just to allow uh, national grid to bring power into the site underground uh, via, I believe it's pole eleven at the corner of Spooner and uh, what we call the paper road, uh, the back access to Parkview, which is, becomes kind of the main entry point for the uh, one of the main entry points for the school. Um, it's gonna come from that pole, which does get uh, relocated about five feet from where it is now. That'll happen um, you know, early uh, late spring, early summer probably. Um, but then that pole goes underground from there. We have all the underground in currently. Um, it runs to the transformer and it runs to the generator and then it runs into the school. So it is uh, pretty straightforward documents, just the easement for them to uh, bring in the power and be able to maintain uh, their services.
Any questions from the board?
I have none.
None. Alright, um, Craig, if you wanna make a motion to um, to grant the easement.
I move that we grant an easement to national grid installation of underground electrical utilities for the Blanch Ames Elementary School.
Second Lamb.
So it's Bodger and Lamb, Craig?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Genetti, yes. So looks like uh, your three items are all wrapped up, Walter. Um, thank you so much for you and the team, um, really keeping us up to date on this. And uh, and the level of detail can be overwhelming, but uh, we really appreciate having it and um, having you translate that for us.
Not a problem. And if anyone, if, if you guys haven't been over to the school, um, or you're looking to, please feel free to stop in the PMA trailer if you wanna shoot me an email or, or um, set something up to, to walk over. Um, we're there. Um, so-
Are you, are you in that, in that trailer every day, Walter?
Uh, on, other than this week, yeah, I am.
Okay, that's good to know, cuz I am gonna definitely take you up on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we, we have it, we do, yeah. And if you even, you know, really, you can come whenever you like. We're there, um, seven to four pretty much every day. Um, so
Okay.
You know, if you don't wanna go during the busy day, if you wanna go after hours, or if you wanna go sometime after four o'clock, just let, let us know. We send us an email or a text or something and we can set that up too.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, Walter.
No problem. Everyone have a, have a great holiday.
You too.
Okay, next is uh, the finance director and audit committee chair for the presentation of the fiscal year twenty-twenty audit. So we have uh, Len Berkowitz as the chair for that and uh, Wendy. Hello again.
Hi, oh, hold on. There we go.
Good to see you, Len.
Good to see you guys too. Uh, first thank, uh, I wanna thank everybody who served on uh, the audit committee with me for the past four and a half years, um, including Mark for joining us um, this past term. I, I, I do appreciate it and every time a new person joins, we, we get more insight. And um, thanks to everyone who's on it. I also uh, wanna thank the board for a- appointing me and then reappointing me a couple times. So um, getting into the um, audit practices first, um, uh, as Wendy knows, there were no material findings. And we've whittled away at, at, at different things that the accounting firm of Melanson's been asking for, for, for years. And uh, I think we're at a good point. Uh, we had a new partner this year. It was part of our best practice. We kept Melanson, but we changed audit partners to get a, a fresh perspective. Um, and we've dealt with Ed Boyd. So we've got one year left with uh, Melanson. Um, my uh, resignation's effective on one-one. I think at our next meeting, we're gonna talk about recommending um, you know, negotiating a, a new deal with them as well. Um, so I wanna get into the findings of um, two thousand and twenty fiscal year. Um, that was the first full year of COVID. It, it was a pretty challenging year um, for the town. Um, but the town came through really well. And I, I wanna explain why and go over the financials about um, some items that may look great and some that may not look so great, but um, i- it really isn't a, a bad thing at all. It was, it was a great year. So um, our general fund, which is the stabilize, uh, stabilization fund and, and free cash or unassigned, um, increased by one point one million. And that was a result of some cuts in services that related to COVID and also some stimulus one-time funds. Um, so that went to eight point three percent of the budget, which was up um, significantly over prior years. Um, the good news is that even though it was eight point three percent of the budget, it could have been better. Collections were down, probably as a result of COVID, as town receivables went up. Uh, I, I've, subsequent to the audit, so on the next audit, you'll see, um, and you all probably know that uh, the, the subsequent events are, are excellent because young collector receivables were great, were a great asset for the town. And when, when you have that out there, you collect them and it just drives more cash in the next year as well as stimulus funds went up. And Wendy, you can, you might wanna comment on where the general fund is right now. So which I, which I heard is, is in an excellent position.
Yes, yes. So fiscal, fiscal twenty-one ended, you know, on a very positive note. Um, the collections that lagged in fiscal twenty rebounded in fiscal twenty-one. So we had a combination of um, you know, great collections, um, great tax collections. Our motor vehicle excise came in very well over budget. Um, ambulance was down, but um, we're seeing that coming back um, in this fiscal year. And um, and then we also had a lot of um, you know, significant budgetary turnbacks too, and, and the stimulus money certainly helped that. Um, but as a result, our free cash, um, as of July one, twenty-twenty-one was higher than it's ever been. It was, you know, four million dollars. So um, you know, we've, we've certainly done very well. Fiscal twenty ended on a positive note and fiscal twenty-one um, is even more positive. So when our, our um, undesigned fund balance in the general fund has grown from, you know, eight point three percent of our, you know, expenditures to, it's probably, you know, the audit isn't completed and they make different audit adjustments, but you're probably looking at it more like twelve percent. Um, so that, that increased uh, very favorably.
Yeah, I mean, ten percent is, is excellent. So if you're at twelve percent, that's great. Um, also in FY twenty, uh, we were able to secure um, capital funding from free cash. So it, it was just another bonus. Um, so I, I wanna talk about the town's bond rating. So it, it's remained at uh, double A three, which is good. And it's pretty much been stabilized there. And it's probably about uh, as high as we'll get. I think, um, I know Wendy, you've gone to, to Moody's and asked what we can do to improve it. So I, I do wanna talk about the other part of the balance sheet and, you know, Mark and I were uh, really discussing this with, with Ed at our meeting. And um, so the problem is, is it's not a problem. It's the liability, uh, the retirement liability right now. It went up ten million dollars. So if you look at the balance sheet, you'll say, wow, our liabilities went up ten, ten million dollars and it'll kind of freak you out a bit. But um, it is an issue, but part of that relates to interest rates. So when interest rates are low, and they were low in two thousand and twenty, they're still pretty low now. Um, our, our liability goes up because there's less available in the fund to pay it. So uh, Bristol County pension, I believe, is it, Wendy's a two thousand thirty-five or two thousand and forty where they demanded full funding? I'm not even sure. It's one of those years. So it's some-
This is, this is supposed to be fully funded by twenty forty, but the current funding schedule, um, it, it, it got pushed out from like twenty twenty-eight to, um, I think it's twenty thirty-
Thirty-five, is it?
Four or thirty-five?
I think it's thirty-five, we, we discussed. So um, right, right now, I've, the town has put in twenty-five thousand a year and uh, on, on a ten million dollar liability, I mean, it's a drop in the bucket. It, it's token insignificant. And um, so I think we did question why, why it was even made at all. And uh, I'm pretty sure Mark's brought this up to your board before. Um, you know, either funded or, or don't. Um, it's a, you know, it's a future liability. So it's, it's basically what is its deferred compensation to town employees. So it's deferred, so you don't need to pay it, it currently, but you know, the bills do need to get paid a- at some point. Um, you know, so, you know, possibly the money will be there, but if it keeps growing, you know, more and more of, you know, current budget will, will be funding it. So it'll, it'll come out at some point. Um, you know, it's, it's quite possible. And when we discussed this with Ed, that, that twenty forty day, you know, Bristol County might kick the can even further down the road. Eastern is in no, is in no different position than any similar town around us. Um, and we also discussed, you know, part of our problems with school funding. Um, you know, the towns, you know, rejected, um, you know, uh, legalizing cannabis and, and collecting money there. Two of the things that would contribute if the town did move forward with that are host agreements, which now are becoming less and less, as well as, as well as taxes. So i- it's becoming less appetizing, but that, that was a funding source. So, you know, the town's doing great. But you know, there's that long-term liability, liability that's still out there that I think this committee will be dealing with in the future. Yes?
Uh, Len, if I could just add, I don't know, this is more present than what the fiscal twenty uh, or even frankly, twenty-one audit will show. But uh, looking at our long-term uh, OPEB liability is something that um, we've been taking pretty seriously for a few years now. And we have um, the OPEB trust, which does not have nearly enough to cover those growing liabilities, which again, like Len said, is not dissimilar to most municipalities uh, in Massachusetts. But this current fiscal year we're in, twenty-two, is the first one to have a recurring annual contribution through our employee benefits budget into that OPEB trust. Uh, we've also been working uh, to incorporate uh, through collective bargaining, um, provisions uh, that once all of our unions agree, there would be small contributions through payroll deductions. all of our unions agree, there would be small contributions through payroll deductions on an annual basis if all the labor partners agree. So, we're approaching that angle from a, that challenge from a few different angles because we, you know, that liability is there. We meet our obligations every year through pay as you go, but obviously, as Len has correctly pointed out and everyone here knows from having your own healthcare, healthcare costs in the US usually go in one direction and it's up every year. So, we're working to make the investments we need to make there to protect ourselves more in the future.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't want to make that sound as a negative. It's just fact and that several towns are facing and, you know, I think the town came through great on the audit and subsequent events, as I've discussed with Wendy, are great. So, I mean, I, I mean, you guys always discuss future, you know, future sources of revenue. So, I think the town should continue to do that. I mean, I think the town's on a good track. That's, you know, I don't know if you have voted on accepting the financials or if you vote, but I think there was a, I think the financials run line, material weaknesses were none and, you know, I'm looking forward to the next set, although I won't be in my present role. I'm confident in the members of the committee, so thank you.
Thanks, Len. Before I open it up to the Board, I just, Mark, you serve on that committee and I just wanted to see if you had anything that you wanted to add on.
Len summed it up perfectly. You know, our financial standings and practices, they're outstanding. I think that's well-known and we're very proud of that. I, you know, after having sat in the meeting, I, and sitting on this board and having been on the Finance Committee, I think the only black cloud is that OPEB fund. I know we are working towards funding it better. The wheels are in motion for that. It's just, it's such a big number and the contributions are small. However, Easton, and it's been said, is, is doing, it's actually, Easton is doing more than a lot of towns. A lot of towns aren't doing anything and they're just planning on, they're not planning on anything. So, Easton is doing the right things. I just, I feel like that 2035, 14 years away to close that gap is never going to happen at the rate we're on and I don't even know if it's reasonable to put ourselves on a path to close that gap in 2035 because not one, I can't think of every community being whole at the end of that 2035. I can't, Connor, by all means.
It just, so, just to be clear for anyone who's watching, in addition to our OPEB contributions, when the county makes that actuarial assessment of when that funding goal is required to be met, they inform their annual bills basically to all of the municipal members of that and we pay those and in Easton, those are four to five million a year. So, everyone, even communities who aren't taking a more aggressive strategy on OPEB, which is managing healthcare-related retirement costs, we all do get a mandatory assessment every year for the pension aspect. So, I just want, we are funding those and you are right. So, typically, depending on what is going on in the market, the county may reassess that full fund date, but we are making progress there and there does exist in theory unless we keep revising the actuarial studies and kicking out that fund date, but in theory, the goal is everyone continues paying these hefty assessments every year playing catch-up and you reach a point of full funding of the obligations of a pension where the contribution rate of modern current employees is much higher out of their paychecks than former employees and hopefully, that becomes self-sustaining and frees up millions of operational capacity for communities like us. So, I just wanted to split those two issues out.
Thank you. Now, we are taking it, I think due to the personalities of the leadership in this town, it is being taken very seriously. I just, I wish we could do more, but I know we're doing everything we can.
This is one of the biggest challenges in the state, the Mass Municipal Association. Every meeting, just about that you go to, this is, this is one of the topics, one of the workshops, it's always a conversation statewide. So, Easton is doing a good job, but I really appreciate, Len, that you and the committee call that out and explain it so that people understand it and, you know, it's, it's not the best thing, but we're certainly not doing the worst at it either. So, something that we do need to keep, keep in the, in the mirror there. I really like the management letter and the updates to that and where we stand with those and it looks like everything, that's usually the thing that I look at when I see the audit, I skip right to the end and look at that because it's really a good, a good capture of what we've done, what's, you know, what might be looked at in the future and it looks, it looks pretty healthy. Craig, do you have any comments, questions?
I just want to appreciate Len's work on the Audit Committee and Wendy, working with them. It was a very comprehensive document, but as, as Dottie mentioned, I skipped to the end too, to see, make sure that the letter says that we're okay. So, thank you, Len, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jamie?
No, no questions. Thank you, Len.
Thanks.
Jen?
No questions, just want to thank the Audit Committee, Wendy and you, Len, for your most recent work and everything you've done over the past several years. Thank you.
So, we don't have to vote on this, this is just a presentation. So, so thank you very much for the presentation and all this information is available online. So, next is the acceptance of the resignation of Len Berkowitz, effective January 1st. His term expires June 30th, 2023. So, Len had sent in his letter of resignation. We really appreciate you staying on a little bit extra to be able to wrap this up so that you could conclude it for us and really leaving the committee in some good shape. It was, you know, this committee went through some, some changes and, you know, some bumps along the way and your leadership really helped keep it on track and really, you know, stepped, these are really important issues and to be able to bring those together in a committee and be able to speak them to the public so that people can be aware of them is really important, is a very important role and we really appreciate that, Len.
Thanks.
So, we will vote, a roll call vote to accept your resignation with regret, starting, I'd need a motion and a second and then the roll call vote.
I move that we approve, we accept Len Berkowitz's resignation with regret.
Second, Lamb.
That's Bodger and Lamb.
Bodger Berkowitz.
Lamb Berkowitz.
Devens Berkowitz.
AC Berkowitz.
And Full Janetti Berkowitz. So, thank you very much, Len. We appreciate all the great work you've done.
Appreciate it. Thanks again, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Wendy, do we need you for the next? Nope. Wendy can leave as well. Thank you, Wendy.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Wendy. Have a good night, Wendy.
Wendy.
All right, next is a contract award for Southeastern Regional Services Group for Department of Public Works Services.
Sure, so attached in your packet is a Sursage Contract Award for DPW Services. Just as a refresher, Easton is a member to the Southeastern Regional Services Group Bulk Procurement Collaborative, where a handful of municipalities in a region go in on bulk purchases for cyclical supplies and services that we need typically for public works-related items so that we can get an economy of scale buying in bulk. In this, you have services relating to chip sealing, trench repairs, crack sealing, line striping, things of that nature. Funding is appropriated for this and I would recommend approval of the Sursage Contracts for DPW Services.
Any questions from the Board?
I have none.
All right, with that, I would take a motion, Craig.
I move that we approve the Sursage Contract Award for the Department of Public Works.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, back to you, Craig.
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
AC, yes.
And Full Janetti, yes. Thank you. So, next we have a presentation from the Assistant Town Administrator, Michael Blanchard, about the Easton Citizens Academy for the Spring 2022. Hi, Michael.
Hi, thank you. Just gonna get my screen going. I know there's a lot of me, I have a very short presentation. Do everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Yes, great.
So, we are very excited to be bringing for the spring a Citizens Academy for Easton residents. The Citizens Academy, as it's currently planned, is a nine-week up-close view of local government, kind of behind-the-scenes look. Participants will take a deep dive into all aspects of town government through a variety of classes, interactive activities, and this will all be done with instruction by town officials as a way for residents to learn about all aspects of their government. Citizens Academy, we have one evening per week and it'll be held at various locations around town. Tentatively, that would include town offices, DPW, water, fire, police, Semrec. We plan to take a, see if we can take a COA van over there, Frothingham Hall, schools and the library. The program is designed to expose residents to the various town departments so they can gain a better understanding of how municipal government works. As mentioned before, be through presentations, discussions, hands-on activities, visits to town departments and facilities. Participants will be able to have the opportunity to hear from various town officials and learn about the operations, the town programs and services. It also serves as a way for town officials and departments to connect directly with Easton residents and I think really importantly, to allow participants to discover new opportunities for public involvement, the role that they can play in town government and how they can be more involved at the local government level. During each session, participants will interact firsthand with department heads and other town staff to learn about the daily operations, challenges and goals of each department and have the opportunity to ask questions of each department. So, as the, as we kind of put the final touches on the program, we envision it being open to Easton residents 18 and older with first preference being given to registered voters, just in the sense that as a registered voter, you can more fully participate in town governments with voting and participation at town meeting. Applications will be available by the end of January and the deadline to apply and participants will be selected notified by the end of February. So, each week, a new topic in town department will be covered. This is just a sample schedule, this has not been finalized, but just to give you a sense of what the program might look like. So, it'd be everything from, you know, orientation, introduction to government, administration and finance, public safety, public works and water, the schools, town clerk and town moderator and town meeting, planning and economic development, library, inspectional services, health and community services, IT and boards and committees. The intention here is to kind of offer a final exam, which will be attendance at annual town meeting, which would be, you know, great to help with quorum and then finally a graduation at the last select board meeting in May where we have some certificates and let people speak a little bit about the program and what they get out of it. So, that's really it. I just wanted to be quick, but you know, I think our intention is that the academy would be a real excellent way to educate residents, to build positive relationships, increase communication between government and citizens and as I mentioned, I think most importantly, help inspire future municipal involvement and leadership. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions and the Board and residents can, look, we'll push this out through all our normal channels, once we open up applications through the prior, social media, website and hopefully traditional press coverage as well.
This is really exciting.
We think so.
Well, let me put it out to the Board. Any questions from any of the Board members?
I don't have any questions, Michael, but when I, when I was much younger, I had the opportunity to go something very similar to this up at the State House, when they spent time teaching us about how the State House, how the House and Senate function. So, this is very exciting to me to see this at the local level, so thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Mike. My question is, who thought of this? Where did this come from? This is such a great idea.
Yeah, so, you know, as always, we try to bring back best practices as we learn about them through other communities and there are communities that have been doing this and they've had great success. So, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel, but we're trying to steal some of the best pieces from that, you know, obviously tweak it and personalize it for Easton. And we're also open to feedback. You know, I think the intention is after each session, to get feedback from residents, what was good, what, you know, what didn't work and try to tweak on the fly and also tweak as, you know, hopefully a year-to-year program.
I think Mike is being characteristically humble. If I recall, it was his idea, which is how he ended up running it. He's, he's, I really can't emphasize enough, and you know, Dottie brought this up at a recent meeting, that, you know, Mike's kind of omnipresent in the background and keeping things running, often with his camera off and just making these things happen, but this is one of those concepts that, you know, he and I have spoken about for some time and I basically said, okay, we'll take the ball and run with it and he's doing 99% of this work and on top of everything else he's doing for the budget and licensing and soon to be filling in for me on parental leave, just really, a really incredible asset for all of us. So, thank you, Mike.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Connor, thanks for stealing my spot and I'll just say that had Mark not already said it, when you first started talking about, when I got wind of this academy, I don't know how many weeks ago it was, I was, you know, that first, that same question came to me, which was, where'd you come up with it? And then the execution and to see it laid out in the agenda, you know, or at least the tentative agenda laid out in front of us, I'm only sad that there's only 20 spots because I would feel bad taking one if it was open to like, you know, 315, then I'd feel a little bit better about raising my hand and saying, I would really like to participate. So, that, thank you very much. I'm really excited for this program. I kind of, well, I hope that there's, you know, 1,000 applicants, then I won't feel so bad about not getting a spot, but, and then I hope we can open it up and do the next session. I hope by popular demand, it gets brought back and you're doing this in the, in the second half and, and other people are wanting to come on board to run it for you. So, thank you.
Thanks.
I just love this. I think it's, at its core, it feels like the thing that could inspire a person for a path into civic engagement in ways they never realized they were passionate about. You know, I went to school for planning, one of my degrees, and so many people had no idea the basics of municipal management and organization and, you know, especially in a state like Massachusetts where we're home rule and there's little laboratories of democracy, it's fascinating to drill in and start to understand how the pieces come together and how they work and function to create this community we're in or any given community, but it's a really, really cool thing. And like Jamie, I hope that the response is so incredible that you can't help but keep on running these programs. The one question or comment I have is, it sounds like everything here is kind of in-person, field trip based. For future thinking, and this is kind of something of a pilot, future iterations, it might be worthwhile to think about how folks who are interested but can't be attended in person for, you know, whatever reason, which is very common in this life right now, whether it's recorded or streamed or whatever, might be a way to open it up to folks who may have challenges in that front. So, I know for this purpose, this is a great way to test the waters, but just throwing that out there. So, awesome, awesome work. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea. Appreciate it.
And just to kind of add to what Jennifer said, there's a real shortage of people that are going into the municipal trades from everywhere, from treasurer to administrative to DPW to town administrators. The MMA, Mass Municipal Association, talks about this a lot and they have, you know, really focused on this a lot to try to get people interested in public administration. So, this is really great and I noticed that the beginning age is 18 and I'd love to see some young people want to get involved, you know, for many reasons, whether it's a career choice or whether it's to be able to more fully participate in our town boards and committees. This select board has really tried to make an effort to diversify our boards and committees and then that includes age, expertise, gender, ability, you know, race, background, all kinds of different aspects. So, I really am excited about this and I think it really falls in line with, you know, really the work that we've been doing and it's really exciting. We, as select board members, have really gotten to go to places like, we've been out to see Semrec, which is the coolest place ever, if that's just what people are interested in, but also, you know, actually going into the DPW, looking around, looking around, you know, at the police station, the fire station, getting to know these places and the history of them and what work is really performed in them, I think is, is just incredible. So, thank you. So thank you for stepping up for this, Michael. My one question is, how are people going to be selected for this committee? Is that, and in the application process, like, what kind of guidance do you have there?
Yeah, so again, we, we hope we get more than twenty applicants to have to make those decisions, which would be great. But as I said, you know, I think we'd look at some preference to registered voters, again, so they could fully participate. And then to Jamie's point, you know, I think we would look at other people new to government, maybe other people who are, you know, been on boards and committees for ten years, and try to weigh out the benefits of giving somebody who has been around and knows some, maybe a good opportunity for them to have a fresh perspective, but also balancing that with a new resident who's looking to get involved and try to encourage them, give them the information and inspiration to start volunteering. So there's nothing cut and dry at this point. I think we'll talk through that as we get a little bit closer, but those are some of the things that we'll be thinking about.
That's great. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate the presentation and really excited and looking forward to this getting going.
Great, me too. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, next we have the Town Administrators' Presentation for the Eastern American Rescue Plan Act, which we know as ARPA for Phase One. So Connor, if you want to take it away for that?
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. Let me just get my screen share going here. Apologies in advance. Mike is a lot better at succinct presentations than I am. There's a lot to cover here, so I'll try to be as quick as I can without sounding like an auctioneer. And I, I think the good news, this is mostly good news here. Because of the length of this, I would encourage members of the board, please interrupt and ask questions as we go so that this isn't too lecture-like. So just a little bit of background. Most members of the board are probably well acquainted and aware, but just as a refresher, the American Rescue Plan Act was a piece of federal legislation signed into law by President Biden on March eleventh of this year. It was a kind of signature COVID recovery legislation of one point nine trillion dollars, containing direct financial relief to Americans. Most of the kind of headlines focused on things like stimulus checks or the expanded child tax credit, various economic recovery programs relating to the COVID-induced recession, emergency rental and homeowner assistance. It included funding for vaccines and vaccine campaigns, financial support for businesses. And finally, the area that we're going to spend tonight talking about is, is financial relief to state, local, and tribal governments, as well as to public schools. So this graph kind of shows the breakout of where those different funds went. So out of that one point nine trillion, three hundred and fifty billion is for what's called the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which rolls off the tongue, which is why I will always refer to it just as ARPA. That program provides funding to support states, local, county, territorial, and tribal governments in their continuing efforts to fight and respond to the pandemic, not just from a health perspective, doing things that are more kind of directly obvious, like running vaccine clinics, but also responding to the negative economic, social, and, and public health impacts that have been borne out by COVID-19. The amount received by each of the fifty states and then the subdivisions within those states, like counties and municipal governments, were determined by the United States Treasury. So what can ARPA funds for local and state governments be used for? The United States Treasury has released a pretty exhaustive, hundreds and hundreds of pages of guidance, and I've tried to distill that to, you know, twenty slides. Local government programs using ARPA funds have to fit into one of these expense categories. You have public health, which again are the more obvious things, like a COVID testing or vaccine clinic. You have negative economic impacts. That's doing things like any kind of programming that could assist the community in recovering from the economic downturn and, and building out of that. Services to disproportionately impacted communities, so funds to provide services to communities who have borne a disproportionately negative impact in the wake of COVID, again, both from a health, mental well-being, and an economic perspective. Premium pay for eligible employees as determined by the United States Treasury. Water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. Municipal revenue replacement to support the operations, any general governmental town or school operation in the wake of revenue loss from the pandemic, and then administrative costs. The United States Treasury has outlined kind of four guiding principles for effective and compliant ARPA programming. In its fitting, this is on the same night we're presenting the audit, these funds will be very kind of shrewdly managed and, and audited by the Department of Revenue. The United States Treasury will be doing some audits, and Bristol County Commission will as well. So four really key principles here. One is the responsibility of Eastern or any recipient, as a recipient of federal funds, to follow the law, follow the regulations, and not commit fraud. This seems really obvious, but that's the, the United States Treasury's number-one priority for good reason. The second is that the United States Treasury wants governments to prioritize swift and effective programming. They very much want to see this money get out the door, so to speak, and start doing good in communities and in the economy. And you'll see some of that rationale in the programming that's proposed, that takes advantage of existing human and programmatic infrastructure to make sure that we can get these things off the ground, mixing that in with building some new programs. A focus on equity and service to disproportionately impacted community. The U.S. Treasury has really emphasized that they want governments to prioritize programs that help vulnerable populations, that help folks who have been left behind by previous federal governmental investments, and that we prioritize keeping equity at the front of our mind when we are building programs. And then finally, transparency and accountability to promote public trust. So part of that is tonight. Eastern is what's called a non-entitlement unit because of how small we are in the scheme of governments in the United States. We don't actually have any obligations to give presentations like this, or to create websites, or surveys, or publish our plans for the public, but we are doing so anyway. You know, we've, we've had a few different items tonight, talking about transparency and taking that seriously and having some pride in that. And so that, that's a core pillar of programming, according to the Treasury, and that's something we hope to continue to embody. So the performance period, performance period is basically the period of time over which we can use this federal funding. The performance period is quite long. It's longer than CARES, which preceded this. ARPA funds may be used to cover eligible expense categories between March third of this year through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four. Depending on the type of spending, particularly if it's capital-related, you can obligate those funds by the end of calendar year twenty-four and expend them through twenty-six. So there's quite a few years to work with and manage here. Because of that, and because of the multi-year performance period, our plan takes care to draw only partially on available funds in each given year to maximize the length of time over which we can draw down on funds and spread the benefit out. So for fund management, there are two pathways for the town of Eastern to apply for and receive ARPA funds. The first is through the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. Through the DOR, Eastern is anticipated to receive approximately two point six million in two equal dispersments of one point three million each. One of those was received in June, the other, we expect twelve months from then, in June of twenty-two. The larger pathway for eligibility for Eastern is through Bristol County. So in most of the United States, county governments provide a much higher level of service than is typical in Massachusetts, where you have strong home rule and very strong municipal government. When you're crafting legislation for fifty states and eighty thousand units of government, you can't have it tailored to fit every single circumstance. And so what ended up happening is that in the communities in Massachusetts that have a county government that exists, two roughly out of every three ARPA dollars for that community went to the county. So we worked with Bristol County throughout the spring and summer and fall, and they have, as of Labor Day, voted that their intent is to distribute ninety percent of their fund receipt to the cities and towns of the county. This is similar to what Norfolk and Plymouth are planning, and they actually just launched their application portal last week. So we are estimating potential ARPA fund eligibility through the county of roughly four point three million. As I just mentioned, their application portal went live last week. The exact terms as far as the amount and frequency of dispersments is to be determined. The first, very first step of that is the grant agreement with the county, which is your next agenda item tonight. So as far as how the funds are actually managed, it's a grant. ARPA is treated as a grant to municipal government, just like CARES. It is requested and administered through my office. Under the charter, this can be done unilaterally, although we do make practice with large programs like this, that we do come to the board. As you may recall, the board did vote to authorize both myself and Dottie back in the spring to start applying for and receiving these funds. The spending is subject to review and potential audits by the Department of Revenue, Bristol County, and the U.S. Treasury. Bristol County in particular has multiple layers on the front end of audit firms reviewing programmatic eligibility to basically take care of that on the front end, which is, which is a good thing. Programmatically eligible spending is not subject to appropriation. So again, think of this like CARES. CARES was a two point two million dollar federal grant that the town and schools were able to use for eligible COVID-related expenses. Those grants are not subject to appropriation, meaning we don't need to go to town meeting and have them voted on. This is a necessary component of responsive and quick grant administration because if you only have two town meetings per year, you can't pivot on a dime and do things like open up seven vaccine clinics on one week's notice. Revenue replacement, which is the second kind of bucket of potential use of ARPA funds, may be appropriated as a general fund revenue source in future years, although it's not necessarily required to be. Again, we, we don't have a kind of regulatory requirement to publish this plan and solicit feedback, but larger governments, over two hundred and fifty thousand residents, are through what's called a performance plan. And we borrowed heavily from that and launched a website. I didn't update my PowerPoint. The website's actually live now. It is eastern.m-a.us/ARPA, a RPA that has our plan. It will have this presentation. It has the budget, and it also has a survey. We want to hear people's thoughts on what we're proposing, as well as ideas for future investments, because our first phase of proposals is not speaking for the entire potential grant. So a few important notes, talking about timing. This is the first phase plan. It doesn't propose spending the full amount of potential ARPA funds we may receive for many reasons, relating to the fact that our local programming will be impacted by what larger governments above us, including the county and the state, decide to do with their own ARPA receipts. In the time since this presentation was pulled together, we learned about a amendment to the state ARPA plan for Eastern to receive funding for PFAS mitigation, what made it through that process, which is incredible. And that's the kind of reason why, if you have those things outstanding, you may not program municipal ARPA funds for PFAS. So the Commonwealth has its own five billion dollar ARPA pot that is being finalized. The first, first tranche of that spending was just signed into law by Governor Baker, I think, a week ago. But there are still additional funds, and it remains to be seen how those funds will work their way through the grant system and, and come down to our level. But we're very excited to have those opportunities as a Commonwealth. On the county level, the, the application portal just went live last week. We are voting a grant agreement tonight, and there, there's still more we need to do there to, to figure out what the request and receipt process is. And finally, there are other federal investments being made. The Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act was passed and signed into law. That will include significant funding for some areas that overlap, including water infrastructure. I don't have the exact number offhand. I bet Dottie or someone on the board does. But I know the EPA has announced seven point four billion in infrastructure funding for water for states. So there's other potentially extremely beneficial programs coming online, and we want to make sure that we are kind of waterfalling our grant allocations to take advantage of more specific programs for specific needs in reserving things like ARPA, which are very broad for broader needs. And it changes every forty minutes, but Build Back Better may or may not happen. We don't know. But that is a significant federal package, which could really, depending on the shape it takes, if it happens, again, create funding opportunities at various levels of government. Another note on timing is that the United States Treasury rules, at least when I wrote this, and might have happened since, for how these funds are to be used, and particularly for things like revenue replacement calculations for local governments are not final. They're very, very, very detailed, but the rule's not final until it's final. So there's some outstanding clarification needed. One of the most significant is that, as it currently stands, the United States Treasury has indicated that certain non-operating revenues, most significantly MSBA grants for buildings, may actually count as revenue, operating revenue in this formula, which would then ironically reduce Eastern and many other municipalities' ability to tap into ARPA for true operational revenue loss. So that's out there. We are working on it. Congressman Auchincloss's office is very well aware of it. We've been, I'm saying we, the municipal leaders and congressional delegation have been working with Treasury to try and seek more clarification there. But that, that will likely evolve over time, and it's not an emergency by any stretch. There are many years for this program to be managed, but just important to note that there are still clarifications pending. Fund management strategy. So I alluded to this before with the potential of other federal programs and state programs and county programs. We got a lot of really good experience with CARES, working with the schools and all of our departments, with programs like ESSER and other things like FEMA reimbursement, that we want to make sure that we are being very strategic and thoughtful about which funding stream we tap into for a given need. Even with this kind of generational level of federal investment that we're, we're living through right now, there are still more needs and there are resources. And so the priority for us is to promote the maximum financial and programmatic benefit to our community, whether those funds come from a local program that we create, a county program, a state-funded ARPA or otherwise funded program, or federal programs. And accomplishing this requires taking a kind of gradual approach to spending and not letting all that out in one year. A key priority there is for us to, to the extent we can, not duplicate existing programs. And I, I just noted this, this is, this is all great news to have these resources available, but the level of need, need for public programming is immense. Anyone who's sat through operating budget presentations or attended a town meeting knows that while we're very proud of what we're able to accomplish here, we have major structural revenue deficits baked into the way that municipal government is funded in minimum-made communities like ours. And so we need to be mindful that while ARPA represents an incredible investment, it's not a recurring investment. And therefore, we need to be cautious with these targeted investments and understand them with our eyes open that the programs that are funded here need, are either going to be one-time investments that track with our performance period, or we will need to temporarily absorb them, not temporarily, we will need to work to permanently absorb them into our operating expenses over time, and if we can't, then we would need to eliminate the program. That said, we, we feel this is a good balance of, of programs and, and really fits the bill of what the Treasury is encouraging and targeting some really important investments in Eastern. Phase one is a starting multi-year investment, and we'll adjust it over time. So before getting into the actual plan, does anyone have any questions or feedback on the kind of nuts and bolts of how it works?
Nothing from me. Anyone from the board? Just jump in.
All righty.
Hey, keep going.
So Eastern's actual plan, the stuff folks probably really want to hear about. Eastern's Phase One ARPA plan supports local COVID-19 mitigation efforts, including what we've been seeing recently, like testing and vaccine clinics. It is investing in programs that focus on children, families, and underserved populations more likely to have borne a disproportionately negative impact financially, physically, educationally, and emotionally and mentally from COVID. The Phase One programmatic investments include COVID mitigation efforts. They include educational access and learning loss recovery, financial relief to fixed-income homeowners, social work, mental health, and crisis intervention support, working with health and law enforcement and EMS, as well as benefits and grants, navigation for our residents, businesses, and civic groups. Forgive me for this being a spreadsheet, but stuff's relatively detailed. So I'll, I'll, I'll talk through some of these programs. And again, if anyone has any questions, please let me know. First up is COVID-19 testing and vaccine clinics. So you know, the policy objective here is quite clear. We want to mitigate the spread of COVID, particularly during the surge that we are living through right now. Through running municipal vaccine and testing operations. This is something that through the summer shifted away from municipal government to the state at the state's behest. And on the first Friday in December, the governor reached out to municipal leadership and, and basically called everyone back into duty if they're willing and able. And I'm very proud of how our team has stepped up on effectively no notice to run a lot of vaccine and test clinics. I think the new variant and the level of breakthroughs we're seeing shows it. Unfortunately for all of us, this is, this is here to stay. And we have, we have a long road in front of us and we're going to need to keep the fight up. And ARPA funding will provide a key resource pool for us to lean on for the, the costs of running these clinics. So you'll see here, you have the policy objectives, a bunch of references to the Treasury rules for how we know this is eligible. And then the estimated investment during the performance period. So for now, we're plugging in 100,000 for this program. The next three are education related. So ARPA allows for investments in education to help deal with the negative impacts of COVID. For things like learning loss, as well as to make access to education more equitable and widespread. So the, the first item here is to reduce it this year and then eliminate tuition for full day kindergarten for all children and families in Easton. To provide equitable access to all children in Easton, to full day kindergarten, regardless of their family's income. This is a priority the school committee and the superintendent have been making very clear for, for a long time. And it is a time that we do this and the schools will be, have been working very hard to incorporate pieces of this into their operating costs. And ARPA will help support that. So we're, we're proposing roughly 600,000 over the performance period for this important initiative. Tutoring, so the schools ran really incredible tutoring opportunities over the summer to address learning loss for kids. Who had to be learning from home for, for so much time. So we'll be expanding access to tutoring for students in Easton. This is a proposed investment of, sorry, I'm skipping. 200,000 over a performance period. Another educational investment is early college and career pathways. Again, these are, I can't take credit for any of these programs. These are things the schools have been working on independently prior to ARPA. And we're looking to again, take advantage of and expand those existing programmatic infrastructures, things we know makes sense and are, are good for the community. So this funding, which is about 190,000 over the performance period, would expand early college and career pathway program access for public school students. To boost college affordability and career placement viability. Another program which we're excited about is a housing security program for homeowners. The board, I'm sure recalls that the community of Easton was extraordinarily generous during COVID and funded to the tune of a quarter million dollars, a rental relief program using CPA funds. Those funds were able to be used for rental households, but not ownership. At the time that the debt exclusion for the ongoing early elementary school building was approved. At that town meeting is basically a gesture of goodwill to the community, understanding that we were increasing the tax burden. We also adopted the state law required to create what's called a taxation aid committee. Where we could provide relief to homeowners on fixed incomes on the cost of their real estate taxes. And so that committee presented to the select board fairly recently, they established very sound financial metrics to rely on, including AMI area median income, which is what 40B uses for housing authority affordability determinations. And that made a lot of sense to me that we have this existing program pathway to provide financial relief. Direct financial assistance to economically disadvantaged residents is something allowed by ARPA. And so I've let the chair of that committee know that it's my intent to make up to two, 100,000 per fiscal year available to that committee. To be, to fund folks being able to stay in their homes. So I think that will be a really important investment and will help reach folks on fixed incomes, seniors, people with disabilities who taxes are, could be a significant burden for. Another program, I, I believe Jen asked a couple of meetings ago, when we were presenting our paramedicine program, whether or not we had anything in the works for a kind of comparable mindset, looking at social work and addiction and crisis intervention with law enforcement. And we said we were, we had been working for quite some time with the chief. And director and happy to, to include that in our ARPA plan, which is a social work and community resource unit. So there's a few moving pieces here. One is a creation of a civilian a, a social worker position that will work for the town of Easton. Working with the health department and the police department, similar to how our public health officer works with the fire department and the health department. The goal here is to provide ongoing, non-emergency case management and follow-up services to vulnerable populations in the community. The victims of domestic violence and abuse, children whose parents have been incarcerated, individuals suffering from mental illness. And addiction, following up with folks who have overdosed. And, and so trying to reach these populations in Easton and who, according to US Treasury, these are, these are populations who have suffered. Every, most people have suffered through this pandemic, but people in these vulnerable populations have disproportionately suffered. And this program, the goal is to provide those kind of ongoing, non-emergency follow-up and wraparound services through a collaborative community resource officer unit in the police department, working with the social worker or mental health counselor. Right now, we have a wonderful TAP program that has gone off the ground with Wings of Hope. And, and through effectively the, the generosity of a single volunteer. To follow up with folks who have overdosed recently. And, and this will provide resources to make this a permanent operational model. And expand from where we currently are, which is a limitation driven model of emergency intervention by a fire or police department during moments of acute crisis. And somebody dialing 911 to hopefully o- ongoing longer term case management and resource provision. We're looking for licensed social worker or an equivalent to assist with enrollment for folks in clinical and therapeutic mental program, medical programs. To improve the long-term outcomes for those residents, improve their safety and improve safety for law enforcement and our staff as well. We actually went to the human resources board and have the job description approved by them last week. We'll be advertising that through the holidays. So we're, we're all very excited about that program. Almost done here, benefits and grant navigation for residents and businesses. So earlier I alluded to it being a priority for the town to make sure that we are not duplicating effort, which is frankly quite difficult. When there is so many different programs from so many different governments going on at the same time. But the goal here is to rather than fund tiny, you know, 15 different tiny programs that don't have the resources to really get off the ground and help a large population. This would fund a part-time local employee who would report to the deputy director of Health and Community Services, Coria Honan. And be a, a resource who is public facing and whose responsibility is to help connect residents, businesses and civic groups. With federal and state level financial assistance and grant programs that have been authorized through ARPA, CARES and other COVID-19 related recovery bills. There's two really important outcomes we're looking to achieve here. One is to increase the likelihood of Easton residents and businesses securing financial support and obtaining benefits that they qualify for, but may just not know exist because of navigating the federal bureaucracy being a terrifying prospect. And two is to reduce the likelihood that we inadvertently duplicate efforts and spend our local ARPA dollars on something that already exists, if we just knew the right place to look. So this, we think will be a, a good investment. We'll be working under the tutelage of somebody who has been very successful at managing grant programs like chapter 115. And helping folks find access to a variety of non-municipal grants to help get them to the outcome we're looking for. Which is more financial prosperity and independence. And then finally, municipal revenue replacement. This is a somewhat of a question mark for now, as we try and determine what what that formula will look like. There was a portion of this that was retroactively creditable to 21, which was 600,000 and change. We've estimated about another million over the next few years of a performance period. But we, we, until we get more clarity from the United States Treasury, we don't actually know how much we'll be able to use in each individual year. But something we'll keep a close eye on. So for now, we certainly should treat that 1.6 over the performance period as a, as a educated guess. So in total, what you're looking at is a planned investment of 3.7 million. Again, you could break these into kind of two broader buckets of the revenue replacement and then programmatic investments. This is what the programmatic investment looks like. Prioritizing disproportionately impacted communities from education, social, social detriments of health. Dealing with negative financial impacts for homeowners on fixed incomes and funding public health initiatives. Looking at a plan in its totality, you could see where those program investments stack up at 2.1 million compared to the estimated revenue replacement. And this is what a, a, a potential drawdown plan looks like. So in sum, the phase one plan spans fiscal 21 through fiscal 24. Reflects an estimated investment of about 3.7 million dollars during that performance period. The revenue replacement supporting all town and school services is estimated at 1.6 million. With a balance of about 2.1 million focused on those programmatic investments for ARPA eligible programs to help the community. So that is the ARPA plan. Would love to get some feedback or answer any questions the board has.
So that's a lot. A lot of information, a lot of thought went into that, a lot of planning, a lot of really understanding how ARPA works. So really grateful for you to bring that all forward Connor. Any questions from anyone on the board? Greg, start with you.
I don't have any questions, but I just am very impressed with it. I, I told Connor that before when we first saw the, the proposed use of ARPA funds, that I was very impressed with the scope and breadth and the, and the investment in, in education and also in, in working with, with vulnerable populations. And answering some of the questions that came up over the last couple of years about, about police intervention using mental health folks as, as opposed to police officers to handle those kinds of issues that are, are non, nonviolent. And I'm, I'm just very impressed with it and I appreciate the, the work that Connor and his folks put into this.
Thanks Greg. Mark?
I have no questions. That was exceptionally thorough. I think over time. I will have questions, but right now there's, there's a lot of information to digest, to be perfectly honest. So I'm going to sit on it and think about it. Cause if I, if I throw in a question right now, it'd just be for the sake of asking a question.
So while we, well, before Jamie says anything, there's a couple of members of the public in our attendees. And I just want to say, if you do have any comments or questions, please put them in the Q and A and we'll read them after the board. So go ahead, Jamie.
I don't want to be the too cynical, but is, as far as the county goes, and we know that it has taken them a while to get to the point where they even opened up the application process on December 13th. And I would say without Connor and Dottie, you know, attending those meetings and being on them as Connor has been. Every week, you know, month, if not week, we may not have had that application process even open up on December 13th. A question came up during the budget subcommittee meeting about interest on that money. Now I know we're not talking about, you know, you know, maybe point oh five, but point oh five on name the million, whether it's the 4.2 or whatever, you know, or, or 1.3. So that I am curious about the county's control over the money. And I, and obviously they hold back 10% and they can utilize that towards, you know, their program costs to, to, you know, to, to be able to control and handle of these resources and be the, you know, ones that control for all, all communities. So I'm, I'm a little cynical on the, on the county side of this, but it's probably, probably because I've gotten such good information and, and what's going on over there. But I'm just curious about that. I don't know if any of us knows what the county does with the interest that they'll make on that money in the time between now and whenever we receive it. And it's been now in their account since what, March? I'll kind of leave it at that.
Yeah, maybe, hey, I, I don't, I don't know the answer to the question as far as their obligations with, with interest. I, I, I can certainly ask. My, my effort and energy has been more focused on helping to support the county getting to where I, I think they needed to get, which they have now, which is making a, a lot of that funding available for the folks who deliver services on this level. But I'll certainly see if I can find that out.
Just. Thank you. And, and well, Craig, I'll just finish that. Thank you for that, because you know, part of me does think that if, if it's transparency is what we're looking for, right? We are very, we work very hard to be transparent. We want that transparency, that's what you're working towards. And we'd love to know if, if that's, you, you know, on their end, something they're going to be transparent about. So thank you very much.
Yeah, one of the meetings that I, that I went to over the summer, they were pretty clear that they were only receiving a portion of the money. Is that correct Connor? They don't get all the money at once. It's over a couple of years, is that how it works?
Yeah, so their receipt is similar to our D O R receipt. They received half of their award this spring, which their total allocation from the federal government is 110 million, which is sizable. They're going to pass 10%, 90% of that through to the cities and towns based on a vote they took in, on Labor Day. They received half of that, so 55 million this spring and they'll receive the other half next spring.
I have no questions. I've seen this presentation a few times and it's very thorough. And I think you have a very well thought out plan for addressing some serious community needs and opportunities. And I think that it just, it's clear, a lot of thought was put into this. So thank you for that.
And I'd just like to add that, you know, like everything that we do when we're looking at the numbers in Easton, this is a very fiscally conservative and responsible approach. A lot of money comes in, a lot of towns don't even know, where do you start with this? Some towns are, you know, looking at even having to answer for how they spent their cares that may not have qualified specifically. And there could be clawbacks on some of this. It's really, really intense and important information. I think that the approach that Connor is recommending really addresses the nature of this equities at the top. People that are vulnerable and underrepresented that really have felt the brunt of this. You know, I know that most people have, but for myself, I, you know, I was able to change jobs in the middle of COVID and, and not miss a beat. I was very lucky. We haven't, my family hasn't been tremendously impacted as other families have been. And I'm grateful for that. But also I, I see a lot of people who've really, they've lost jobs and, and trying to work at home with, with kids at home and everybody using the internet. And we all know the stories and, and many of us experienced that. So I think to be really thoughtful. I, I just, I look at that and all I can see is full day kindergarten. Wow, what a, like, that is such a win for the community, for the families. To bring these littlest learners up to speed with, you know, so that they can get a head start. And it's something that we've worked on, and I say we collectively, the school committee leading for many years. And I'm just so happy to see that in there, that it's a priority for that and the perfect, perfect use of that money, I think. So really appreciate all great things in there. But I, but that one really means a lot to me. We do have one comment from Jennifer Starr, as you know, she serves on the school committee. And she said, not a question, but wanted to thank you for such a thorough presentation and thoughtful and transparent process. I feel that this plan reflects the values of our community and the priorities that have been set forth and talked about over the past several years. And make the most of these valuable resources. So thank you Jen for your comment on that. And I'll certainly agree. So, thank you so much on that. So the next item that we have up is a vote on the execution of the ARPA grant agreement with Bristol County.
Sure, so attached in your packet is a copy of the necessary grant and agreement with Bristol County. It is a mandatory prereq for us to, or anyone in Bristol County to apply for these funds. And I recommend its approval. It's been reviewed by council. Uh, and I recommend its approval. Uh, it's been reviewed by council, uh, but uh, just being frank, if we want to apply for these funds, this is what the agreement must say. So I recommend approval. And there's a proposed motion.
Any questions, comments?
I have none.
All right, Craig, do you want to make that motion?
I move to approve the American Rescue Plan Act grant agreement with Bristol County as presented and to authorize the select board chair and the town administrator to sign and execute any related documents to effectuate this agreement.
Second, Lamb.
That's Bajer and Lamb?
Bajer, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Debbins, yes.
AC, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Terrific. All right, um, next we have the town administrator COVID update.
Sure. So pull up another screen share here. Trying to get as many PowerPoints in as possible before the calendar year ends. Uh, so as we've made practice of uh here in Easton, we try to keep everyone pretty informed and uh engaged on what uh COVID is looking like nationally, regionally and locally, and how it's shaping our uh own efforts uh in policies. And uh unfortunately, this uh update is a lot closer to uh where we were uh last winter than what has been more typical in the summer. There is uh wall-to-wall news coverage of uh Omicron and the increasing caseload in the United States. I think everyone's quite well aware of it. Um, all the normal indicators you would look at to make an assessment about how much uh community spread there is are on the rise. We've passed eight hundred thousand uh Americans who've lost their lives. These average uh new cases in the United States every day is one hundred and thirty thousand. We were below fifteen thousand in the summer. Uh, we have twelve hundred people on average uh passing away in the United States every day, and the percent of tests coming back positive is over ten percent. Uh, this is the uh visualization of that data. As you can see, we're we're kind of heading into a another winter surge here. The last time I gave an update to the board was your first meeting in November on November first. Uh, at that time, we were looking at seventy two thousand cases per day on average. That is almost doubled in the U S. We're at a hundred and thirty thousand plus. Hospitalizations have begun to follow that. Uh, uh, you know, I think the the hope now and and some of the data coming out that I'm gonna touch on later is uh that uh despite the disturbing amount of cases we're seeing, even among folks who are vaccinated, that uh severe illness and death will hopefully be mitigated compared to what we saw last winter. Uh, so far that has been true. Last winter, we had well into the six figures of folks in the in the hospital in the U S. Right now it's at sixty thousand a day, which is certainly too many. And it's up over from forty thousand uh in November. This is a a data aggregating site, COVID Act Now, that takes a variety of metrics like the test positive rate, daily cases, uh, and and visualizes it for the level of community spread. This is what we looked like six weeks ago, and you could see that uh nearly everyone has worsened, uh particularly the Northeast has a a tremendous amount of cases going on right now. In Massachusetts, uh, the daily uh average of cases uh is thirty six hundred, actually, since this presentation was finalized. I think that number is now over four thousand a day on average, according to the D P H. Uh, we're seeing um just a significant amount of cases per day. For point of reference, for worst of the surge last winter, we were over six thousand cases per day. Hopefully, we do not get there, but uh we certainly are moving in the wrong direction. Uh, November first, you we're looking at under a thousand cases per day. Similarly, the test positive rate has increased, and similarly, hospitalizations in Massachusetts have also increased. All of these have effectively tripled or more in the past six weeks. Not everything is bad news. Um, the D P H today actually released a a great uh data review of uh looking at actuals, you know. So a lot of times with these fluid situations, you need to look at forecasts. The D P H has looked at the actual hospitalization and fatality information of COVID from beginning of the pandemic in Massachusetts and uh what they found is reaffirmed what clinical studies have shown, which is that uh, again, none of us want to see breakthrough cases at all. All of us had hoped that uh vaccination would kind of just make this a complete moot point. Uh, but the good news is that the vaccines are still performing uh admirably for their their most important function, which is reducing severe illness and death. And so the D P H has looked at uh breakthrough COVID cases uh among Massachusetts residents over the course of a pandemic and has found that nearly ninety seven percent of all of those cases do not result in hospitalization or death. Uh, additionally, uh, that review found and quantified that unvaccinated folks are five times more likely to become infected in the first place than people who are fully vaccinated. They're unvaccinated thirty one times more likely to become infected than those who are vaccinated and have received a booster shot, which again really nails home the point uh and the importance of everyone getting their booster uh doses. The review from the D P H also found that ninety nine point nine percent of breakthrough cases among vaccinated folks under sixty were non-fatal. Uh, and that even for folks over sixty, that that was uh uh ninety seven percent uh were non-fatal. So far, there have been no fatalities in anyone under thirty in Massachusetts who's had COVID after being vaccinated, which is great. Moving uh down to the local level here in Easton, we are nearing three thousand cases cumulatively during the duration of the pandemic. Uh, we have broken seventy uh residents who have lost their lives uh to COVID. Uh, this is what our weekly new cases look like, which is not what we want to see. Uh, we hovered, uh, we had a few wonderful weeks in the summer where we had zero cases. Uh, then we started hovering between twenty and thirty five for in the 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 Delta surge from uh August through Labor Day and frankly, leading up to Thanksgiving. We had a cut cases start to trend up near sixty for a couple of weeks, and they've really just uh exploded post Thanksgiving. Uh, we're now uh nearing a hundred and twenty cases every week, uh which is eclipsed only by the worst of the surge uh pre-vaccine. Our test positive rate is on the climb. Uh, and even with this, this is to an extent subsidized by Stonehill's uh enormous ongoing asymptomatic surveillance test operation. Students have now gone home. So just like you see last winter, we anticipate that the lack of that level of asymptomatic tests being put into the pool, that we'll see our test positive rate continue to climb. This is the raw data informing these graphs. Uh, the really important data here is just the fact that the trends are moving up. So on the local level, what have we been doing in response to this? So uh back in August, when cases began to rise uh with the uh emergence of a Delta variant, uh, we implemented a mandatory policy for all municipal staff to attest to their vaccine status and provide evidence of it through a C D C card. Uh, but we felt it was an important policy uh decision that at that time with cases where they were, we not treat uh someone who is fully vaccinated identically to someone who is not as far as their potential for contracting or spreading COVID, because uh those things they they are not. Uh, and so we allowed vaccinated employees to uh not have a mask at work. The policy worked. Uh, to our knowledge, we didn't have COVID spread among any vaccinated staff. Um, and it was well received. It also resulted in us having full understanding of where we are with vaccination of our workforce, which is overwhelming, uh, and that's a positive thing. Uh, however, we have to pivot and be responsive to what we're seeing around us and with the increase of cases in Easton and in Massachusetts and the Northeast. Uh, we last week rolled out a three-point uh policy of focusing on masks, boosters and testing uh for staff. So starting last week and through at least January twentieth, basically bookending the holidays, uh, everyone in all of our buildings uh will be masked uh unless they're alone, whether they're vaccinated or not. Uh, we've had numerous COVID booster clinics that are open to the public and to our staff. We've been doing those every week. Uh, those have been quite well received. I give a huge amount of credit to the folks running them. They've been excellent. And we also uh have been running rapid test clinics every week for the public, and we will also uh be making rapid tests. Uh, we'll have rapid test clinics here for our employees when they return uh from Christmas and New Year's. We saw large surges. Uh, I think everyone saw large surges in cases in their organizations following those holidays last year. Uh, and so we will be uh widely testing to try to catch those cases. Uh, as we all know, we're still on Zoom. Uh, we are procuring the technology and working out uh in person and hybrid meeting tech, but given where we are right now, I that's certainly at least from my view, not be the top uh priority to make that shift during this surge. Uh, moving into vaccines, since our last meeting, uh vaccines, I believe Pfizer was uh okayed for children five and up, which is uh it's really an important next step in the fight against COVID. There are boosters available for everyone over eighteen. Folks can find vaccines uh using the state's website, vaxfinder dot mass dot gov, or by calling two one one. United States and Massachusetts are making good progress. Um, U S, seventy three percent of the country has had at least one dose of the vaccine. Uh, in Massachusetts, that's closer to ninety uh percent, which is uh great. As I alluded to uh in one of the announcements, where we're having clinics tomorrow and Wednesday, uh, the last time we talked about COVID and actually at your last meeting even two weeks ago, uh, we we have not been running vaccine clinics municipally for quite some time. Easton uh answered the call in January, February and March, like most cities and towns did in Massachusetts to run vaccine clinics for first responders and senior citizens. Uh, but in the spring, the Commonwealth pivoted uh away from that and moved that vaccination operation to centralized state-run facilities and away from local governments. Uh, we still try to make vaccine opportunities available through limited partnerships, things like pharmacies, pop pop-ups, vote-in vax, uh trying to run job clinics and things like that, so that we could keep being uh helpful in that arena. Um, however, with cases surging uh in the region and uh demand far outstripping uh the amount of sites available to get a booster, uh thankfully not outstripping the amount of vaccine, but not enough people giving it. Uh, the Department of Public Health and Governor Baker uh appealed to municipal governments of a week after Thanksgiving uh on Friday, December third, uh specifically asked for those of us who are willing and able, please reopen your local clinics. Uh, our staff worked over the weekend and by Monday, that following week, we had announced uh our clinics for tests and vaccines. And we've been running them ever since. December has actually been our busiest month ever uh uh from EMA, so Health, CERT, FIRE, um, and a lot of other staff helping out. Uh, we have been running at least one test and one vaccine clinic per week. Last week, we did uh a booster clinic for two hundred, a pediatric clinic for kids at the schools for a hundred fifty and over a hundred tests in three days consecutively, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Uh, so we are on track to do over six hundred and fifty, six hundred and fifty doses of vaccine in Easton in three weeks and over three hundred tests performed. Uh, we had booster clinics on the tenth of fifteenth. We have another one tomorrow night. Uh, when this meeting started, there were still spots available for folks to go to easton dot M A dot U S slash COVID nineteen. Again, that statistic uh doesn't lie. Uh, boosted residents are thirty one times less likely to get infected than someone who's not vaccinated. It's really important that we all uh take that opportunity. We had a uh first of our uh two-dose uh pediatric vaccine clinic working with the state and Brewster at the schools on Friday. Uh, we had testing clinics every week, uh and we have another test clinic this Wednesday, although that is full. Uh, and tomorrow, in addition to another two hundred dose booster clinic tomorrow night, Health and Fire, again, well, the the paramedicine program will be doing homebound visits uh for folks to get booster shots, uh for folks who uh are having a hard time uh getting out of their homes to get to pharmacies. We will continue to do what we can uh for as long as we can, uh as long as we receive supply. Uh, I haven't had to update this graph in a while. This is the amount of vaccines that we are uh getting out the door uh and into arms. And if you just look here, orange is boosters administered by the fire department uh on a month-to-month basis, and we have uh the fire department working with Health and CERT have administered more vaccines the past three weeks than in any uh full month of the entire pandemic. And they did so on on literally zero notice. I think that when I I got off the conference call with the Baker administration and called the health director and fire chief uh and a few other folks in fire and said, we need to do this, uh, I'd like to do it next week. And our public health officer, Tim Bimosi, had already ordered vaccine uh without even speaking with me. Um, so I am so thankful to the team we have here uh for Easton Fire, Health, CERT, all the the other administrative staff who stood up uh a a large mitigation effort uh looking at state D P H data. You know, a a thousand plus folks have uh become vaccinated in a month, and Easton, we know, is responsible for six hundred and fifty doses this month. So just can't thank Fire, Health and CERT enough. Um, you know, with i- in less than one week, we had uh clinics running. So I'm very, very proud of them, and we're very fortunate to have them. Uh, so what do what have these efforts translated to? So uh, since our last update, um vaccines were okayed for five to eleven-year-olds. So in in not even, I think we're talking four weeks, forty three percent of kids in that category have already gotten their first series, which is incredible. Uh, if you look at twelve to fifteen-year-olds, ninety percent of twelve to fifteen-year-olds in Easton have started their vaccine series, which is uh really um really wonderful to see. Young adults sixteen to twenty-nine are still lagging significantly, and then the rest of the population over thirty is is nearing uh, you know, ninety-five plus percent with at least one dose and and uh close to or above ninety percent fully vaccinated, uh which is, which is really great. So uh what you're looking at now is uh eighty-four percent of people in Easton age five and above uh have received at least one vaccine. And remember, for a lot, five through fifteen, they've only had weeks where they've been able to even get one. So uh, but of the eligible population, three quarters are fully vaccinated. That's what this looks like visualized. Uh, blue is uh at least one dose and orange is fully vaccinated. So the community has done a really great job with vaccine uptake. Uh, we're gonna keep trying to play our part in that and making those opportunities available. I know, I'm sure all of us, uh, depending on where you were, uh, as the C D C iterated very rapidly, going from boosters for sixty-five and over to everyone should go get it right now. Uh, the wait times to go to a pharmacy went from very doable to uh, you know, days or weeks. So um, we're gonna keep offering these clinics uh and doing what we can to uh help mitigate this and and make it as uh limit the severity as much as possible. So here are some important resources, vaxfinder dot mass dot gov for vaccine appointments. Go to mass dot gov slash get tested for testing appointments, and then we will continue to uh heavily promote through social media, website, uh and and normal press coverage, any local clinics that we have. We have been running at least one test and vaccine clinic per week. Um, not certain if there will be one the week of uh between Christmas and New Year's, but we will uh, we will continue to explore what our opportunities are and and make as many of these available as possible. So I'm happy to answer any questions from the board.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Just quick, quick question, Connor. How do we get, when someone goes, you know, through Vax Finder? Uh, you know, I know people early on were traveling a long distance. People would go to Western Mass to find anywhere that was available to get a how do we know when those members of our town are vaccinated?
So, I'm gonna preface this that I'm not the most expert in the state's vaccine uh uh immunization database, but the Commonwealth maintains a centralized immunization database that all boards of health have access to. Uh, and part of when you are getting vaccinated, it, the state mandates certain uh information, including where you live. So uh, when folks, whether they're getting it across the state or uh here, if they're, if they live in Easton and they provide that information, then they get pulled into that centralized database, which spits out these weekly vaccine reports.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Connor. We appreciate that update. Um, I guess we just have to continue to be vigilant and um, you know, wash our hands, try to wear your masks in public, and um appreciate you really staying on top of this information so that when we do have to make changes or uh adjustments to the way we do things, um, they're made with data and people's health in mind. So um, very good job on that. All right, um, next up, we have the Select Board Annual License Renewals for two thousand and twenty-two.
Uh, Mike, why don't you take that away?
Sure. Hello again. Um, so attached to your agenda uh and in your packet is a list of our two thousand and twenty-two calendar year license and permits that are due for renewal. So we have the majority of our license and permits renew on a calendar year basis. Um, some do uh also uh renew mid-year. So you'll see before you have auto dealer class one, which is new cars, auto dealer class two, which is used cars, uh billiards, club all alcohol, common Vic licenses, which is any uh food establishment that has seats, so that you could sit inside while you eat. Uh, entertainment licenses, jukebox and electronic game, package store all alcohol, package store wine and malt, restaurant all alcohol, and restaurant wine malt, as well as we have one farmer series pouring permit for the uh brewery. So um, we are mostly all set. Um, there are, as every year, uh some stragglers which we're chasing. Uh, so we would ask for your vote tonight to approve the list as a slate conditional upon sign-offs from all required town departments. We can do some of that last minute uh chasing.
Terrific. Any questions, comments for the, from the board before we take the vote? All right, Craig, would you like to make the motion?
Uh, move that we approve the uh I move that we approve the Select Board Annual License Renewals for 2022.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger, Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Debbens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. And thank you, Michael. I know we've come a long way with our online licensing and people getting used to that, but there's still a lot of work behind the scenes to get that to this, and it looks pretty easy, but I know that it's not. So I appreciate your attention to detail on that and and helping. We get, you know, a fair amount of emails thanking Michael for his work with the licensing assistance and all that he does to make that run smoothly for our businesses. And, you know, economic development is a big part of what we do. Mark is doing an incredible job heading that up, and we get very excited when we see those kinds of feedback from businesses and people in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, item sixteen, Acceptance of the Minutes Dated December sixth, twenty twenty-one. If anybody would like to make a motion to accept.
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Debbens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti. For item seventeen, we have, every year we do this generally once a year. We try to do a catch-up on these for executive session minutes. We have three avenues. The first set of minutes, our executive session minutes for acceptance only. They're not to be released yet. We don't release those because they might have something to do with a situation that is still not fully resolved or closed yet. So that's why we accept them, to make sure that they're accurate, but we don't release them yet. So we have February eleventh, two thousand nineteen, February twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, February eighth, twenty twenty-one, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The board has gotten a chance to review those. There were a couple of small, in the three of these, I'm not sure which couple there were, but there were a couple of small amendments, or not amendments, just adjustments to them that were not substantial, they were not materially substantial. So if anybody would like to make a motion to accept those minutes?
I move to accept the minutes that previously mentioned.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger, Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Debbens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. The next batch of executive session minutes previously accepted that are now ready to be released, and those are from March twentieth, two thousand seventeen, April third, two thousand seventeen, March twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, May eighteenth, twenty twenty, and August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty.
I move to approve the executive session minutes previously accepted now to be released, as mentioned by the chair.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger, Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Debbens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. And the next batch is executive session minutes for acceptance and release. That is June first, twenty twenty, September fourteenth, twenty twenty, December fourteenth, twenty twenty, January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, April first, twenty twenty-one, and June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
I move to accept and release the executive session minutes previously mentioned by the chair.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger, Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Debbens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Next, we have Town Administrator Notes, as if you didn't have to talk a lot tonight, Connor. Anything you wanted to add to our last meeting of the year?
Just thank you to the board and all of our staff and the community for a really productive historic year that started with some pretty challenging weeks during the pre-vaccine surge. You know, I think it's pretty incredible to look back that when twenty twenty-one started, we had not administered a single vaccine dose, and almost nobody had received one, and we're now at a place of hundreds of millions of Americans having received them, tens of thousands of Eastern residents having received them. And certainly not perfectly smoothly, but seeing a lot of economic recovery, starting to tap into these important federal resources to continue to give that the boost it needs, and just, so thank you to everyone who was part of that. And thank you to the board, and have happy holidays. Stay healthy.
And next are Select Board Notes. Craig?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring people's attention to, as everybody probably knows, the horrific tornadoes down in Kentucky, and the town of Mayfield, Kentucky was basically leveled. And the Lions Club reached out to the Lions Club down in Mayfield to see what they could do to help. And the Lions committed all of the money they made on Saturday from the sales at the thrift store for the folks down in Mayfield. And tonight, today and tonight, Bill's Pizza, everything, all the proceeds from sales of food from Bill's Pizza are going to Mayfield. So I want to scratch my gratitude to the Lions Club and particularly to Bill's Pizza and the folks there.
Thanks, Craig. There's a great article about that in the paper, too, in the Eastern Journal that gives a lot of detail. So thanks for recognizing that.
Yes, thank you, Craig. That's amazing what the Lions did and what Bills did. That's basically reaching into their own pockets and just giving everything, their labor, their material, everything away. So it's incredible. All I have to say is have a wonderful holiday, a happy new year, and please be safe.
Thanks, Mark. Jamie?
Yes, second that. Happy and healthy twenty twenty-two to everybody.
Thanks. Jen?
Yeah, nothing else to add, just wishing everyone happy holidays. Special thank you to Connor and your team for everything you've done to make this, as you put it, a kind of special year in certain ways, some that we like to forget and some that we are glad to be here to be able to talk about. So thank you all, and wishing you a safe and happy next few weeks.
And so I made a note that I got some information this week that's really exciting. So as everybody knows, our state representative and Majority Leader Claire Cronin was finally confirmed by the Senate as the Ambassador to Ireland. So Claire was first elected the same year I was elected in two thousand and thirteen, so going into her ninth year, and she's had so many amazing accomplishments throughout that time. She was the first woman chair of the Joint Judiciary Committee. She was the first woman Majority Leader. Can you imagine really at the end of this, like her choices were to be the Majority Leader or to be the Ambassador? Her next step would have probably been Speaker of the House, which, you know, all of these incredible options. But more than that, Rep. Cronin has been a real friend to Easton, a real friend to each of us personally, and to so many in the community. And so I want to congratulate her and just let people at home that might be watching know that if she's touched your life in some way, or you just want to wish her well, you can go on the state legislature's website and her information if you want to send her an email, or you want to give a phone call, or you want to drop a card to her location at the State House. I'm sure she'd appreciate hearing from us. She's been, she's just done such great work for us in the community. So congratulations to Claire. And I want to thank all of my board members. You know, it's just been such a pleasure and an honor to serve with you all in this past couple of years. Really tough times through COVID, and we've really been doing some incredible work. So I want to thank you all for your professionalism and your leadership, and thank Connor, Michael, Elizabeth, Mary Southworth, all of our department heads and staff for the incredible dedication that they've had over this past year especially. And thank you to the people in our community that really, you know, give us the feedback, that help us figure out what direction to go in. And, you know, we really appreciate that as well. So happy holidays to everyone, and like the fellow board member said, wishing everyone a happy and healthy new year, and we will be back at it in twenty twenty-two. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Debbens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Stay safe, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.